I'd like to call and order the Charter Township of Oxford Board of Trustees. Regular meeting today is Wednesday, February 14, 2018. The time is 7:01. Please pay respects to the flag.
I publicly lead this to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand as one nation, unregarded, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Noted, please.
Noted.
Approve of the agenda?
I make a motion to approve the agenda with the following amendments. Item 10C, fire dispatch agreement. Renaming items 10A and B to be 10A, 2017 CDBG Emergency Services Bid Awarding, and B, 2017 CDBG Minor Home Repair Bid Awarding.
Removed?
Seconded.
And supported. Any other discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
opposed? Motion carries. Public comment on items not on the agenda.
Approve or consent agenda.
As Joe says, approve or the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Any questions? Roll call. Trustee Nichols?
Yes.
Trustee Durham?
Yes.
Clerk Wright?
Yes.
Supervisor Dunn?
Yes.
Treasurer Ferrari?
Yes.
Trustee Payne?
Yes.
And Trustee Curtis?
Yes.
Move on to public comment on items not on the agenda. Any public comments? Well, happy Valentine's Day to everybody. Let's move on to the item 7, 7A. Right in possession for this. I see Skip McRone is here. Skip, would you come out up here because I have a question.
Certainly.
I hate reading stuff written by lawyers.
Yes.
But in reading, I don't have it with me. But in that ordinance, is there somewhere in there where there's discretion for the officer to either let the young man go with a minor infraction, or if he's a real jerk, to part with him?
You're asking?
I mean, I love the ordinance. You know why? Because, you know, when I was, you know, 16 to 20, I did a lot of stupid things and by the grace of God, I survived it. But, you know, for a person to get caught drunk driving and make a stupid mistake, I don't think it should mar the rest of his life. So, I mean, that's why I like that. But if this kid's stupid enough to get lippy, or hit a cop, or do something stupid, well, I don't think he ought to be let off. So, does this ordinance take care of that?
You're asking?
Say who you are.
Skip McRone, I'm your township prosecutor.
Okay.
And you're asking that question as someone who used to walk the Shane Street beat in the 1970s? Really? Mr. Supervisor, police officers always have discretion. What your township had was an ordinance that made the first offense, or any offense, a minor in possession, a 90-day misdemeanor with a fine of up to $500 with costs added on, could cost a person under the age of 21 in possession or consuming alcohol close to $800 in total fines and up to 90 days in jail. What you've done now is come into alignment with a recent change in state law. And what the state law now says is that a minor who is found in possession or consuming alcohol is charged with a civil infraction on a first offense. That civil infraction carries with it a maximum $100 fine, so there's no criminal record of it. There is a record in the Secretary of State's office. The reason for that is a law enforcement officer in the field needs to be able to determine if this is a first or second offense. On a second offense, it becomes a misdemeanor with a higher fine. On a third offense, a higher fine. There's no jail imposed. However, there is a catch for those who might be watching and thinking, "Well, it's $100. We'll have a party." A judge may order treatment, community service, or other things permitted by the statute for that minor to do in addition to the $100 fine. And herein lies the rub. Many, many, many youths who are charged with minor in possession are repeat offenders ultimately. That is my experience. When they do it under your current ordinance, they're found in violation of probation. The maximum jail term they could have gotten would be 90 days in jail. What the state legislature has done, thinking that they've made this a civil infraction, have forgotten that the failure to obey an order of the court is called contempt, punishable by up to six months in jail and a $7,500 maximum fine. So, there's a catch in this change in the statute. But what you've done by, if you adopt this, what you're doing is taking into account that the state legislature has said on a first offense, we want to make it so a judge will not impose jail time, the child will not have a criminal record. The rest is up to them if they obey what the court's saying.
And it can only be used once.
So, you don't get a second bite of the apple. In terms of actual enforcement in the street, law enforcement, the street-level bureaucrats have the highest level of discretion, so sheriff's deputies in the field could always tell a young man or young lady, "We're giving you a warning. Don't let's catch you again. We work this area."
I've looked all those up.
Yeah, there's a wide array. This is probably a good thing. The only flaw of the statute itself is that they did not make it preemptive so that every community would have to obey it. You're showing an enlightened attachment to it by taking your ordinance from what was very, very strict and punitive to something that more aligns itself with what appears to be the right thing.
So, which community has to do this?
Yeah, unfortunately. I appeared before their committee and I told them, "Just make it preempt," and they didn't want to do it.
Any other questions on this ordinance?
Very well-written and Mr. Rindshaw wrote it, so his crew is responsible for you having to read it, not me.
I move to set a second reading and possible adoption of minor possession ordinance to be considered at the Charter Township of Oxford Board of Trustees, March 14, 2018, regular meeting.
Support. Moved and supported. Roll call. Trustee Payne?
Yes.
Trustee Durham?
Yes.
Clerk Wright?
Yes.
Treasurer Ferrari?
Yes.
Trustee Curtis?
Yes.
Trustee Nichols?
Yes.
Supervisor Dunn?
Yes.
Now, move on to the zoning ordinance, 67A.016. Any questions? More motion?
I contacted Mr. Lohnerstader with a few questions, and unfortunately, our internet went down today, so I still have the questions, but I can probably get with him between now and the second reading and get what he tells. There's one, there is one item in here that we do need to change, and it is on page 16 here. In this section right here, usually there's a lead-in to what the paragraph indicates. Like I said, street trees here. On item 3 down here, it's about site condominiums. That header was left off. I mean, if you go down to the bottom of the document, you'll see right here, you'll see right here where it says "Site Condominium Lots." That needs to be added into the ordinance.
And you'll get with Matt to get those done first.
I'll get with him to do that.
I move to set a second reading and possible adoption of the following amendments. One, I modify Section 1.3 enabling statute authority. Two, modify Section 3.7 Schedule District Regulations. Three, modifying Section 8.8 Parking and Storage for Commercial and Recreation of Vehicles. Four, modify Section 7.5 Standards for Landscape Materials. And five, modify Section 13.5 Site Condominiums. To the Charter Township of Oxford, zoning ordinance 67A, for the March 14, 2018, Charter Township of Oxford, Board of Trustees, regular meeting.
Support. Moved and supported. Any other discussion? Let's do a roll call. Trustee Curtis?
Yes.
Clerk Wright?
Yes.
Treasurer Ferrari?
Yes.
Supervisor Dunn?
Yes.
Trustee Payne?
Yes.
Trustee Durham?
Yes.
Trustee Nichols?
Yes.
And Supervisor Dunn?
Yes.
Well, right now, I'm going to do a do-over. I see some kids here that look men. They look like Cub Scouts. And you know what? I'm not going to embarrass you guys, but I do want you to come up here, and I'd like you to state your name and what group you represent, and maybe tell me what you're, why you're here. And I believe it's to get a badge or... Yes, they're working on their arrow of light. That's all right. Come on. I want them to come up. I want to be on TV. I'm not going to embarrass you guys. It won't bite you. Come on. I want you to state your name.
I'm Josh Philpott. We are PAC 366, and we are here to, if I'm correct, to get a badge for, I have light.
Very good.
I'm Aiden Ray of PAC 366, and we are here to get a badge for the Arrow of Light.
I'm proud of you guys, all of you.
I'm Jacob Camina. I'm from PAC 366, and we're here to get a badge for the Arrow of Light.
And so, my name is Cole Jacob. I'm a part of PAC 366, and I'm here to get a merit badge for the Arrow of Light.
I'm Austin Scherer. I'm here from PAC 366 to get a badge for the Arrow of Light.
Thank you very much, guys. Thank you very much for that. I'm proud, proud of you guys. We also have somebody else here from, I believe it's someplace in the east, India. Please stop up here. He is an exchange student, senior at Oxford High for this year, and I'll have him introduce himself and maybe just give a hello to America.
Okay. So, greetings to everyone. My name is Rajat Kadhan. As Mr. Dunn said, I'm an Indian exchange student and a senior at Oxford High School, and I'm here for a job shadow activity because I'm quite interested in politics, and I want to see how administration runs in Oxford and Michigan and the U.S. in particular.
And you're just going, you're going to be going back after your senior year?
I contemplate to continue my college-level education in the U.S.
Oh, you're going to stay here for college?
Yes.
Have you got a place picked out?
I have my eyes on Michigan.
State? Michigan?
University of Michigan.
There you go.
But I'm just waiting for the decision.
Let me introduce you to U of M Brad right here in the front row. He likes you guys.
State Brad in the second row.
Notice who sits in front.
Thank you very much. And again, we'll get together some afternoon, and we'll go around, and I'll show you all my highlights.
Sure. Thank you very much for that. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Okay, let's get back to business. Let's, oh, time out of the trough. Put that on the... Fire Department. Dispatch agreement. We moved it to 10C. We moved it to 10C. We put 10C. What's 10... I don't have a pen. I don't have my package.
I'll just have your... It's a good business, the law.
Oh. Okay, we're going into the cemetery maintenance bid. Curtis, you're the chairman of the cemetery committee?
Yes, as the board is aware, our former lawn maintenance person has moved on to the Parks and Rec as an employee, and we solicited bids for the lawn maintenance services. We did receive back three bids in there. The low bidder was Aaron's Lawn and Order, and we received a bid from Fisher's Lawn and Service, and we also received a bid from LWS. Supervisor Dunn and I reviewed the bids and looked at the qualifications of the individual businesses, and based upon what we thought, based upon years of service, clients they have under contract, the amount of employees they have to back up in case of becoming incapacitated, and also the equipment that they have ready to do the maintenance on the cemeteries. Our recommendation was to go with the second lowest bidder, Fisher's Lawn and Service, and that's the recommendation to the Township Board. So, it's open for discussion. It was not an easy decision.
I was going to jump up and interrupt you, just saying that was one of the toughest decisions I've ever made, and I'm a person that would love to local, but we had to make a decision. It was very, very close. That's what we do. The Board can go with our recommendation, or they can come up with some ideas and convince other people otherwise. Jack?
Yeah, a few questions, Bill. First off, I relish the recommendation that these committees make because we make them all the time, and it's done through a lot of study. But I had the fortune of sitting through one of the interviews, and I looked down, and it was the lowest bidder, saving the township approximately $2,000. But secondly, it is a resident of our community, to which, you know, I've hammered this board all the time, to go out and solicit bids from residents in our community to give back to them. I've since gone in and looked, and this entrepreneur has gone to BNI, Business and Sense Group, that trades entrepreneurial learnings with each other, one-stop learnings, trying to form a company and build a company here in our community. So, I'm going to be voting against the recommended, and I'm going to be voting for a different one, shall it come up, based on residency and based on the lowest-cost bid. Thank you.
Good.
Yes.
Also, I reviewed each of these individuals that put in bids. I was quite impressed with the Aaron bid, and he had raving reviews as far as people have recommended him. One of those people is Bruce Pearson, of course, from Addison, Tomche. I agree too that if you want to keep the business local, I do know that it would be a very difficult decision to make when all aspects of this particular work is analyzed. However, I do feel that, again, this individual is a member of the community. His kids do attend the Oxford School, and he's understandably a very reliable, dependable worker. That would be my opinion.
Anyone else got a comment? Curtis?
You know what? We've had our previous contractor in place for 17 years, and I guess you have to define the word "local" because he actually lived in Lake Orion, so he did a great job as well.
The main reason I went with the choice we want is because one has two or three employees. My concern is if someone breaks a leg, what do we do in the meantime? Knock it to you, Jack, but I just wanted to state my concern. Again, it was gut-wrenching for me to pick, you know, one of these two. But that's the reason it's kind of typical. Jack?
Yeah, and I tried to do that too, and I know Brian did a wonderful job, and he was a one-man band. So, if he broke his leg, he got it done. Thank you.
By the grace of God, he didn't break a leg. Yes.
The only point I would make is I can recall when I first started in the business 38, 39 years ago, and I started out as a one-man operation. And I worked very hard to gain the respect of the clients and customers that I dealt with, and was responsible to maintain the image that I wanted to have for the business. If it weren't for the people that took a chance with me back in those days, I would not have achieved. So, that's the only point I'm making.
I also was in business for 25 years with a family company. That was the only, only person that worked. But again, it's, we're still on up here. All the contractors in the, are in the audience. I don't know if they want to come to the podium and offer their thoughts to the board. Nope. Don't? Don't get nervous.
Sure. My name's Kyle Fisher, Fisher's Lawn and Snow. I was kind of interested in doing the cemetery. Actually, in fact, when I was younger, I actually used to work for a company that actually maintained the cemeteries as well. I've been in the business for seven years. Kind of started on my own. I started at one job. I have 120 jobs. I do have a few guys that work for me. We cut several commercial accounts, so I actually cut a cemetery in Hadley right now. I would like to have the contract. I don't know what you want, what more I could say. I'm reliable. I gave some dependable references. Like I said, I would like to have the job. You guys have any questions?
Any questions from the Board? Joe?
How many clients? We don't give up the attention a cemetery's going to need. As you know, that's quite a job.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
That's my concern.
And I only cut lawn right now four days a week, Monday through Thursday, so I always leave Friday and Saturdays open and Sundays because we usually do landscaping, mow the yard.
I know back when Brian did it, he spent four or five days just on that.
Yeah, well, no, I used to cut Southside and Northside Cemeteries for TMD Associates, Terry Waldo, Bill Bushman.
Okay.
So, I mean, I would put three or four guys on it, so.
Okay, I just want to make sure that if you're word of the contract, it's not just going to slip to the side.
No, absolutely. Okay.
Is your business in the township or in the village?
I actually live in Lapeer.
In Lapeer?
Yep. I grew up in Lake Orion, but 16 years ago, you couldn't buy, when you bought a house really good, I couldn't, so I moved to Lapeer because you could get property. A bigger, a bigger bang for the dollar, basically.
Lower taxes. Okay, any other questions? Does the other applicant want to say anything? Okay, so we got three.
Nope. I'll wait. Okay. Sean Vidicen with Aaron's Law and Order. Yes, I just started my business. It's been growing. Taking on the cemetery job for Oxford would be a great honor, I guess, because I've lived here for 17 years. I cherish this town, this township pretty much, so I'm only looking to grow my business, so this is one step further to the goals that I want in my life.
Any questions? Yes, Joe.
Same question. Would you be able to dedicate the time that's going to be needed for this project?
Oh, yes.
Is this enough? You're cut, boom, you're out of there in five minutes.
Oh, no, I understand what you're...
Especially the verdict struck. It's pretty early.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I'm Larry Stevens. I was one of the bidders on the contract. I am the one-man band guy here. I've got many generations of family in the cemetery. I've lived here my entire life, and I just, I'm going to be using this as my only job, so I'm going to be concentrating only on the cemeteries. I won't have other jobs to drag me down. They're, you know, they're not going to be that complication. It's going to be cemetery jobs singularly, you know, and that's it. No other, no other jobs on the books, just the cemetery. So, I'm going to concentrate solely on the Oxford Cemetery contract. That's about it.
Any questions? There be a motion?
I move to accept the bid, bid from as presented, and award the cemetery maintenance contract to Fisher's Lawn and Snow from February 14, 2018, December 31, 2020, a total bid amount of $177,000. This $177,000 amount shall be payable in the amount of $58,300 for 2018, $59,000 for 2019, $59,700 for 2020. Fisher's Lawn and Snow shall maintain the areas as specified in the contract and provide the services as outlined in the bid packet. Supervisor William Dunn is authorized to sign the contract on behalf of the Charter Township of Oxford, contingent upon all insurance policies in place. For Supervisor William Dunn to meet with Fisher's Lawn and Snow to confirm the responsibilities of Fisher's Lawn and Snow prior to signing the cemetery maintenance contract.
Moved. I'll second the motion. Moved and supported. It was a difficult roll call. Treasurer Ferrari?
Yes.
Clerk Wright?
Yes.
Trustee Durham?
No.
Trustee Payne?
No.
Trustee Curtis?
No.
Trustee Nichols?
No.
And Supervisor Dunn?
I'm good. I vote yes.
Consider another motion.
I move to accept the bid as presented and award the cemetery contract bid to Aaron Lawn and Order LLC for lawn and snow from February 14, 2018 to December 31, 2020, in the total amount of $175,200. This $175,200 shall be payable in amounts to be determined equally between the one, two, and three years. Aaron Lawn and Order Service LLC, oop, just shut my computer up, shall maintain the areas as specified in the contract and provide the services outlined in the bid packet, and Supervisor William Dunn is authorized to sign the contract on behalf of the Charter Township of Oxford, contingent upon all insurance policies in place, and for Supervisor William Dunn to meet with Aaron's Lawn and Order LLC to confirm the responsibilities of Aaron's Lawn and Order LLC prior to signing the cemetery maintenance contract bid.
Support. Moved and supported. Any other questions? Roll call. Trustee Curtis?
Yes.
Trustee Payne?
Yes.
Trustee Durham?
Yes.
Trustee Nichols?
Yes.
Clerk Wright?
No.
Treasurer Ferrari?
Yes.
And Supervisor Dunn?
Yes.
Okay, motion does carry. Congratulations, and we will set up a meeting of you and Curtis in our previous section, and we'll all, we're responsible. Okay. On to new business? CBDG. Joe, Joe?
Board members, first one here we have is for emergency services. I'll make a motion to the Oxford Township Board of Trustees, award the emergency services bid for 2017 Tree Development Blockfront Fund, CDBG, amount of $10,092. Box boring fish, authorize CDBG Coordinator Joseph G. Ferrari, send the legal documents, propose ratification.
Support. Moved and supported. There be a motion? All right. Clerk Wright?
Yes.
Treasurer Ferrari?
Yes.
Supervisor Dunn?
Yes.
Trustee Durham?
Yes.
Trustee Payne?
Yes.
Trustee Nichols?
Yes.
And Trustee Curtis?
Yes.
The next one is for minor home repair. I'll make a motion to the Oxford Township Board of Trustees, who's a contractor of Old Shire, mine home repair services for CDBG program year 2017, amount of $43,681. Authorize a CDBG Coordinator Joseph G. Ferrari, sign the contract on behalf of the township. We're more, both parties acknowledge that there are no other agreements or understandings, but they're all written pertaining to this contract.
Support. Moved and supported. Any other questions? Concerns? Roll call. Trustee Curtis?
Yes.
Trustee Payne?
Yes.
Treasurer Ferrari?
Yes.
Supervisor Dunn?
Yes.
Clerk Wright?
Yes.
Trustee Durham?
Yes.
And Trustee Nichols?
Yes.
Okay, chief, you're up. Higher dispatch.
Board members, in front you have the...
Sorry, chief.
2018 to 2021 fire dispatch for your contract. It's with the Oakland County Sheriff's. This is set by the county commissioners. They're the ones that actually sets the rate. It's the exact same rate per call for every single department that they do, so currently they are dispatching for 19 departments, so every single department has the exact same base cost that's going against our contract. And again, it's based on your number of calls, so it's averaged out. So, our contract in the first year is an increase of 5% and then 4.7, and then down to 3%.
Any questions from the Board? Joe?
We have to go for the full length of the contract because the fire mileage expires by 2020. It goes through 2021, right?
This goes through April of 2021.
This is 18, 19, and 20, isn't it?
I know it's a transition from the local dispatch over them. Has it been a good experience?
They, basically, as they are, they only game in town. We have had some issues from time to time. We do communicate with them. We do, I have my officers write up exception reports, do we. I do send them down to dispatch, have them correct them, or find out what the problem is and get back with us. Supervisor Dunn and I met with the representatives when they came out. I voiced some of my concerns with it. One of the, as the president of the North Oakland Chiefs Association, one of our current issues with is the entire radio system to begin with. Knowing that it's not an Oakland County Sheriff Dispatch radio system, this is a radio system that is owned by Clemms, which would be the entire Oakland County. It's beyond its usefulness, having issues with us and it's time to renew. They are in the process of going out for RFP to replace the old system. We're looking at probably a $21 million deal to replace the entire system. Our concerns from the Chiefs is that we want to make sure that it gets done sooner than, as opposed to later, so we are pushing them and our only concerns with them kind of share it because that's our only, our contact with us. So we, again, we press them to say, hey, hurry up and help us. You know, be our spokesman also to, to move it along, so. Otherwise, we're working with them, yes.
Do you feel they're listening to those concerns and addressing them?
I would say the majority of them, yes.
Are they, do they jump on it right away? You know, everybody screws up.
Mm-hmm.
Do they jump out, you know, with enthusiasm to try to make it go away and not happen again?
Our point of contract is, our point of contact is Ryan Kohe. And we send everything down to him and then he turns around and plays all the tapes back and then gives a typed-out report back to me. You know, sometimes it's our guys didn't say it right, so they didn't hear it right on their time. So again, it's, you know, at least they have written the tape to playback and we can go back and forth on it that way.
Eric, if you don't mind, can I, can I have you come up just for a quick second?
Sure.
Can I embarrass you? Have you had any complaints since they are dispatching your police? Do you have any complaints about that?
The village made the transition about a year ago. It was obviously tumultuous at the time. There have, as the chief has expressed, there have been several minor issues. A lot of it was simply the resistance to change. When you consider the economic factors, the change, in my opinion, was essentially a no-brainer. There really was financially no other decision in our circumstances. You will experience issues. My opinion, however, also being a professional in the fire service and law enforcement is that there are going to be issues with any communication system. You have a situation where there's a sender and a receiver, and if that message is not received exactly as it's sent, regardless of who's doing the service, you're going to experience potential issues. Chief Mel Myers from Oakland County is our representative. He has been exceptional. They've been responsive. It would be my recommendation, based upon my personal and professional experiences with the village, that you would entertain the option.
If I'm not mistaken, you okayed the contract at your last meeting?
We did. The village approved the contract last night under similar circumstances.
Okay. Any questions? Will there be a motion?
I move to approve the 2018, 2021 fire dispatch service agreement between the County of Oakland and the Charter Township of Oxford commencing on April 1, 2018, starting 11:59 PM, March 31, 2021. Authorize Supervisor William Dunn to sign the agreement on behalf of the Charter Township of Oxford.
Support. This been moved and supported by Mr. Nichols. Any other questions? Roll call.
Trusty Nichols?
Yes.
Cork Bright?
Yes.
Treasure Ferrari?
Yes.
Trusty Curtis?
Yes.
Trusty Payne?
Yes.
Trusty Derrick?
Yes.
And Supervisor Dunn?
Yes.
Thank you, board. Quick update. We have received all five of our ZO monitors. They have all been on the trucks. We've got them all programmed finally. We got to make sure that they are receiving at the hospitals, so they are on our trucks now, so they are in service. We also took delivery on our new power cots and they are coming tomorrow morning to install the load system in the back of the ambulances, so they'll be fully operational by tomorrow afternoon then. So thank you.
Do they come with their own hydraulics?
Yes. The cot has a hydraulic system on the cot itself that you just push a little button and the cot goes up and down, you know, by itself. And then when you bring it up to the back of the ambulance, there's a system inside the truck that slides out in a track with like a forklift and hooks up underneath the cot, push the same button and it lifts the cot up. And you just basically push it into the truck with like two fingers to get it back into the truck and then it locks in. And it's a more secure lock system that meets all the new national state safety standards.
Don't be strapped in?
Oh, yes.
Are the hydraulics, do they work with electrical?
Yes.
Okay, so there's a battery on both?
There's a battery on the, on each cot that it's, when it's in the locked position in the truck, it actually triple-charges while it's in the truck. And then there's also a battery that's in the power lift system in there also.
You know what the life expectancy of that battery is?
Lift, lift system, seven years.
Seven years.
Seven years? A lithium battery?
Good system.
It's good for the fire department.
Yes, thank you.
Questions, anyone? Will there be a motion?
I'm sorry, but make it.
Roll call. And board?
Really?
Why are you talking about her now?
Somebody wake her up.
See, everybody makes mistakes. Especially me. Okay, we're going to go on to items removed and what's there was none. Don't be my hunch, y'all, I will get you. Think you're speaking English. Public comment? Is there any public comment? Board, board comment? I'll be the first one to comment. There has been concern about the road commission doing certain jobs, like picking up deer or fixing potholes. I have made some calls in the last couple of weeks. We have lost our, the general foreman from our area. He's moved to Milford. So it's been, along with the, the amount of snow we've had, I'm not getting a real good response from the road commission, which is understandable. Generally speaking, they make all supervisors look great. They come out at any time to pick up a deer, fix a pothole, all it takes is a call. So if there's any concerns, you know, keep calling me. I know the numbers for the main people there and I can generally get them out there point quick. But these circumstances, it's tough right now.
I was there with you when we talked with Chris and Chris did say the new supervisor out here had been out for a week with the flu and that would have been up until like Tuesday of this week. I mean, the whole crew's been working 24/7. Half of them have been out with the flu. These guys were switched jobs. The new guy got sick and there's nobody been in place.
So it's been a tough go, but generally speaking, they do an excellent job. And, you know, we're not responsible for roads. We're different than cities and villages. They own their own roads and responsible for them. We have to rely on the Oakland County Road Commissioners and our request to get out there. And generally speaking, they do a great job. I can't speak highly of them. We'll start with Elgin now.
All right. I guess I should just mention that the N24 task force is back in action again. It looks like N24, the MDOT is going to move up that project. It looks like it's going to be 2019 instead of 2020. So that's good news in a way. You kind of hope we had an extra year to generate some funds, but there are certain cap funds and so forth that we're involved with and we're going to be covering it, I don't think, a difficulty. That's pretty much all I have.
And you're?
Yeah.
Mr. Wright?
Yeah, a few things. Seymour Celebrations coming up and if you're interested in sponsorship, you can get a hold of the Oxford Township's Parks and Recreation for that. Also, the courts department has sent out over 2,000 letters to people that potentially could qualify for permanent absentee voting ballot application. So if you've received those and you qualify and you're interested, please return those to us and we'll get you on the permanent AVS. Also, last night, the Parks and Recreation Commission approved for the relocation of precinct six, which is now in the Oxford Public Library, that will now be relocated to the Seymour Lake Park and the U administrative building out there. That's all I have.
Joe?
As you know, our safety paths have not been maintained as normal in the past. We're going to get that corrected. Our safety path committee is going to be meeting next week and we're looking at different alternatives to get that taken care of. Our other vendors, they chose not to continue, so we're going to try to get a stopgap through this year and then get a new vendor onboard for next year.
Joe, I'm going to just ask you a quick question. How many miles of, what are we talking about? Do you know?
I wish I did. No, because we keep adding more and more. It's mostly by the schools that we maintain in the winter.
So would it be four miles? Three miles?
Yeah, probably about that, three, four.
Eight foot wide? Yes.
I know the village has plowed the one on Lakeville, and I think we're really concerned about the one on Clear Lake.
Yes.
And I can drive that tomorrow and tell you how many feet or miles it is approximately.
And again, we, I think we could do that as a stopgap measure?
Yeah.
To hire someone without going out for bids, just to get us through the winter?
I'd like to.
Maybe we could just ask some of the, sure.
I see Sean could do it since he's been at our cemetery.
Sean or Mr. Spicer or what? Is that from, is it Yoke Drive down to Clear Lake School?
Clear Lake School.